Welcome, everybody. We'll call this meeting to an end. Everybody would please, we'll start with Suzanne, I guess. Let's get the roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Matthews?
Here.
Mella?
Here.
Sawyer?
Here.
And Councilmember Schaefer's absent this evening.
Thank you. Now, if anybody will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're on item number four on the agenda. Jay Mannan was not able to be here today from Cripple Creek and Victor Gold Mine. So we will move on. We have no additions, deletions, or additions, or corrections to the agenda. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, on tonight's consent calendar, we have the minutes from the February 4th regular council meeting. We have a memorandum of understanding between Woodland Park Main Street and DOLA. And we also have the statement of expenditures for December 2015.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? No, we'll look for a motion to approve.
We have permission to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that. Thank you. Suzanne?
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you, Suzanne. We have no unfinished business. No ordinances on initial posting, and no public hearings this evening. So we'll move on to number 10, the new business, and back to Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. If you will recall from the last council meeting, you had given guidance to Aaron Smith, the city attorney, to prepare a resolution in support of the charter amendments that are going onto this year's ballot. And so this before you is the resolution in support of that.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
Bob? We also ask for a similar resolution with regard to this school ballot.
That's correct.
Is that going to be forthcoming?
Yes, that's coming the next council meeting.
Okay. No questions on this one.
Okay.
One comment, though, Suzanne. Have we captured the minutes, the amendments, the resolution that established the Charter Review Committee, as well as this resolution, someplace for the next Charter Review Committee to use?
Yes, ma'am. We have, I don't know if you remember, I created a binder. And in that binder has all the history of everything we did at the charter amendment meeting. So when we start the process again, we can pick up right where we left off.
Okay. No, thank you very much. Thanks for working with Aaron on this.
Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tim Harvey, I'm sure can answer any. If not, then call for motion to approve Resolution Number 803.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Thank you. Questions? Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks very much, Suzanne. Once again, I want to thank Mayor Pro Tim Harvey, everybody that participated in the Charter Review. Long process, almost a year, and just a great job. I hope the voters see the value in the new ballot, in the new charter amendments. We'll move on to emergency ordinances, and Mr. Butterby?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Counsel, you'll recall at the last meeting, you passed an ordinance allowing a question to go to the citizens for sales tax increase that the city would implement that would support the school district. The school board and their council heard some of the questions and concerns that you had and modified the ordinance language slightly, and they want to bring that back to you this evening. Because you adopted that language by ordinance, any change of that language also must be done by ordinance. Now, your question is, why is this an emergency ordinance? Well, it's not an emergency ordinance in the traditional sense of an emergency, such as a flood, or a fire, or a street falling through. The emergency here has to do with the federal mandate that our ballots get to our uniformed service members who are stationed overseas in time for them to vote in a municipal election. So in order for that timing to be met, to order the ballots, to receive them, to get them in the mail so that they can be received in dangerous places around the world, we needed to get this ordinance passed tonight. Aaron Smith has blessed this as within the intent of the emergency ordinance. For questions associated with the changes to the language, I'll defer to the district's counsel, Ms. Crawford.
Hi. Kim Crawford from Butler Snow in Denver. I'm happy to be here again tonight, and thank you for being so generous with your time. As Mr. Butterby said, this school board had heard some community comments since the last ballot question was approved by you on second reading two weeks ago. And many of the comments just dealt with essentially being more accountable for what the purposes were, what they were going to use the money for. So the ballot question is essentially, the first paragraph and the second, and the final paragraph are identical. The bullets in, the bullet one and bullet two are changed just slightly. Bullet one was modified to add the little sub-bullets that talk about what their specific purposes are. And then bullet two was modified to say that by doing this, they're going to be really reducing your property taxes. So those were just kind of clarifications. When I spoke to Aaron, you know, the ballot question that you did approve two weeks ago, you approved it in substantially the form, but neither of us felt like that was, that this was so much different that we had to bring it before you again. And this, as Mr. Butterby said, this is an emergency, so it would require 100 percent consent. So we're bringing it to you again tonight.
If I might point out, the verbiage that council had in their advance packet has slightly changed from what's being presented tonight. And it's this slight change. Ms. Crawford mentioned that the one bullet mentioned thus reducing property taxes. In the version you received, we actually put in the mill levy amount. As the school considered this, understanding that mill levies can actually change, they chose to remove that exact amount. So the final language will read, in that second bullet, dot, 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 existing general obligation bond debt, thus reducing property taxes. The school district, it will be incumbent upon them to educate the community on what those rates would be for residential and commercial properties. Did that represent that accurately?
Right. And what they're essentially doing is they're just not, if this passes, they're just not going to oppose any property taxes for debt service. They would still have the state program, the total program funding, they'll still have a mill levy, and their override is still a mill levy. So there'll still be mill levies, property taxes payable to the school, but it won't be for debt service.
So, counsel, pending your discussion and public comment, we would ask that you would adopt ordinance 1275 if it is an emergency this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Crawford, I think we'll call you if we need you to come back.
Sure.
How's that? Thank you very much. I'm going to start with Rosemary DeVille, if she'd like to come, I'm sorry, Davis, I'm sorry. Ms. Davis, if you'd like to come forward, sure.
Thank you for letting me address the proposed ordinance change, 1275.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Ms. Davis, would you just state your name and your address?
Yes, I'm Rosemary Davis, and I live in Florissant, 82 Apache Creek Drive.
Thank you.
I'm a retired French teacher and curriculum writer. I've taught levels kindergarten through college, and I've also been a teacher in France on a teacher exchange program. I am opposed to a city sales tax increase that funds education. I believe that state, federal, and bond monies are adequate to fund a school system. Just because a precedent was set by certain cities in Illinois, I think that this is a practice that is not right for the citizens. First of all, I have a graph. This is put out by the OECD, which is the Organization for Economics, Cooperation, and Development. And it compares the annual expenditures per students among a certain group of countries. The highest bar here represents almost $16,000 spent annually per student. And that is the top amount that's being spent. The country that spends that top amount is the United States. Also, this graph, published by KISA, which is the Program for International Student Assessment, shows the academic achievement of students in reading, math, and science from 34 participating countries. The U.S. ranks 30th in math. That means 29 out of 34 countries outperform the United States in math. The U.S. also ranks 23rd in science. 22 out of 34 countries outperform the U.S. in science, and 20th in reading literacy. If you'd like a copy, I could give you those. So my question is, how is it that the United States, who spends the most money in students per year, does so poorly compared to other countries? And how is it that a country like France, who only spends $10,000 on their students annually, and has very little operational expenses, they have restricted classroom equipment, technology, no gymnasiums, they have no classroom aids, no innovative programs, yet they outperform the United States? I think that the answer is pretty simple. I've worked over there, and the answer is, they value education. And there's no amount of money that can cause a district to value their education. So with that said, I believe that these ordinances, before the public, are so general that frankly, I just don't see why anyone should vote for the 1275 ordinance. There are no exact figures for the amount of the bond debt, no amounts for the proposed operational costs, nor any figures for the lease purchase financing. I see no termination date for the tax, nor any information about whether or not Woodland Park will grab a piece of this tax, as did the cities of Carbondale, Mount Vernon, and East Peoria, Illinois, who opted for a sales tax. I would also like to know what Colorado law says about using local sales taxes for educational expenses. It may not be an explicit right, as it was not in the case in Illinois. As a resident of Florissant, I'm possibly going to have to pay a tax that doesn't benefit my town and my family. I have to do most of my shopping in Woodland Park, as do the residents of Lake George, Divide, and Cripple Creek. And this tax is unfair to us and to many other Teller County residents. So in my opinion, the best solution to the school district's dilemma is for the school board to ask the experts, who are the teachers, to evaluate all spending so that cuts in unnecessary programs, services, and operational costs can be made without sacrificing teachers' salaries or jobs. The public should not become Woodland Park's and the school district's gold mine of revenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. A question. Did you say you were an RE2 teacher?
No, I was out of this area.
Thank you.
Is Florissant in RE2?
Yes.
I think it is.
Okay, so you are aware that your property tax would go down? So it should be kind of revenue neutral?
Counsel, remember tonight what you're looking at is the emergency ordinance to place this on the ballot. You're not having the discussion on the...
But I'm trying to respond to her comments.
No, I understand. But I'm also trying to stay within the context of the question that's before you. What I also failed to remind you is that should you not choose to pass Emergency Ordinance 1275, 1274 will still stand. And the language will go to the voters in April, as it was presented to you at the last meeting. So really, the only decision you have to make tonight is the two modifications to the language. If you choose not to go that route with more clarifying language, then we'll revert back to the language that you approved at the last meeting.
Do you understand that, Ms. Davis?
Yes, I do.
What we're voting on today is just to give the citizens the right to vote on this. We're not making any judgment on this at all. Just giving the citizens the ability to make that decision.
I just feel that it's so general that they do not know what they're voting on. There are just too many issues that are unclear. And, you know, to put this before the public is, you know, people may or may not think about it, or care about it, or have enough information about it, and may not vote correctly.
Well, we're dependent upon informed electorate, so this is, they have to, just not unlike the national and state level, the more people study, the more informed they are. So that's an incumbency, according to Thomas Jefferson.
Thank you. But my comment, too, is that I follow social media, too. Woodland Park Community Facebook page, et cetera. And these are the types of questions that were coming up. They were, our first version was too general. So this time, they're specifying it's going to be used for these specific areas in education. We've got a middle school where the roof is leaking. We've got to fix that. We've got teachers that haven't had a pay increase in five years. We've got to fix that.
We're going back to the same thing.
Yeah, so in other words, I'm prepared to vote yes for this revision, because it provides that additional detail.
Thank you.
That the staff, I mean, the school district is trying to now provide that detail.
Ms. Davis, here, one thing I would say, our school board and the superintendent are more than willing to sit down and answer any questions that you may have, and to help educate you and get the answers that you're looking for. I think if you took that time, you might have, and you may not have, a different opinion. The point is, that information is available to you to have all your questions answered, as it is to the whole electorate. And so I would urge you to speak to them and get some of those answers for yourself.
I've worked quite a bit in government and with administration. I understand a lot of things. And I think using a sales tax to fund education is not correct. I don't think it's fair. If you look at the overall picture, if all districts ask their city governments to do this, then everyone's going to be used by school districts to fund whatever programs or needs they may have. And I think we're on a slippery slope here, tax-wise.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your input. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else today in the audience that would like to comment? Counsel? Any other discussion? If not, we'll look...
I have one question on one of the sub-bullets, innovative school programs. Could someone explain innovative school programs?
Ms. Green Street is running forward.
Would have missed an opportunity to speak tonight. Carol Green Street, 31 Wolfers Lane, Woodland Park. Innovative school program, Carol refers to our need to move forward in terms of changing education in line with technology and the new opportunities that are out there. It says innovative rather than a specific program, because we feel like we need to go to our community next fall and get opinions from different, all of our different school groups and business groups and all that, to really decide what direction we want to go. There are opportunities, such as competency-based learning, which would require a big change in the school system in terms of letting children learn at their own pace, rather than assigning them to a particular grade level. That's just an example of it.
Okay. I didn't know if that was substantially different than technology alone, so you'd explain that.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
And I want to make a comment, too, that I appreciate that you guys have gone back and provided the specificity that a couple of us had asked for before. It does help, I think, clarify the ballot question. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Agreed. Anybody else? Now, we'll look for a motion to approve Emergency Ordinance Number 1275.
I move to approve Emergency Ordinance 1275. Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, counsel, we'll move on to item number 12, public comment on items not on this agenda. I don't believe we have any this evening. So we'll go right to mayor's reports, you know, combine a few things. I've got a couple of pieces of correspondence that all are relative to, thank you for our grants from the Community Investment Fund, one from Welcome Home Royalty from Donna Fennickel, thanking us for the grant of $1,000 for family retreats, one from Carolyn Smith from the Youth Pass Symphony Guild for the $3,000 grant that they received, and one from the Woodland Park Wood Symphony and Craig Harms for the $1,500 donation that they received from Community Investment Fund. So thank you all. I have one kind of special letter that I just opened up. Mr. Butterby, you can't wait. So I'm going to read this right now. This is just kind of cool, goes into the, kind of cool, because you live in Woodland Park. Mayor, good morning. I sure hope this letter brightens your day. I was at an antique shop here, Stockton, California, and found this old circa 1907 picture card of your beautiful area. Perhaps you can even pinpoint this location. It's an old-time classic, for sure. So I thought to myself, by golly, I'll send it back home where it can be appreciated. Our heritage is important to all of us. Lots of changes, too, over the years, I suppose. Enlarged and posted, it will cause some nice conversation. Well, I gave $4 for it, so if you want $5 or $6 or so, why, sure, that's okay. Throw in a little postage if you want to. My wife is laughing at me and says, if I hear from you, I'll have to take her to lunch. I am 87 years old and still going strong. I like to call my little hobby a redistribution of happiness. Our world sure needs it. Thank you, Godspeed in your work, and remember that spring will eventually blossom and warm you up. From Lowell Georges, Stockton, California. I thought that was very cool. It's very cool.
Can we have a little something from you, saying you're an honorary citizen of Woodland Park? We'll take care of that.
That's amazing. That's very cool.
It's Memorial Park.
Yeah. 1904.
Oh, God.
Ten years before World War I.
I thought you were going to say 10 years before you were born.
Three years, three years after Queen Victoria died, I'm sure. Really, girl.
Of course.
Please count. Okay. Part of my mayor's report, and I know Mr. Ospak will help me with this, the student heart tonight. We have Ally Tring, sixth grader at Woodland Park Middle School. Elevate your education. And as I always say, we have a number of these that are available to any businesses that would like to hang one in their office or their business, and just contact the school administration. They'd love to take care of you. A couple of events coming up. Friday, February 19th, Youth Pass Kiwanis Taste of the Grape, that's this Friday. Funnery Center for High School Scholarships. Youth Pass Cultural Center from 7 to 9, that's a fun event. And Thursday, March 3rd, Chamber Lunch and Learn, Property Evaluation Presentation by Teller County Tax Assessor Betty Clark Wine. Call 687-9885 for information. And that's all I have. Okay. Carol?
I failed to send it to the rest of the council, but I'll do so tomorrow through Suzanne. It's the recommendations from the CML Policy Committee that were made last Friday. Generally speaking, the policy committee does not really consider issues that have any relevance to a town the size of Woodland Park. But nonetheless, I'll send those out for your information and let you know what they're doing up at the Capitol.
Thank you. Bob?
I have just a question on the CML Policy Committee. Has your committee at all discussed the position of sales taxes on Amazon and other catalog...
No, they haven't. The committee itself has not, but CML has dealt with that.
And I think the state has already passed the implementing procedures. It's just the federal government hasn't done anything. Okay. Thank you for your answer.
No, there's no impact on the city. That's a county tax, I think. It's a 2.9%, it's a state tax, 2.9%.
Yeah. But if, I thought also if you ordered, I mean, if they started collecting taxes, it would be, would it only be at the state level?
The 2.9%.
It is right.
Okay.
It wouldn't have the added city tax to it. Ken? I was unable to attend the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful rescheduled meeting last night for another event I had to go to, so I'm asking Renee to come forward, she's already preempted that, and give us a report on the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee and some of the activities that are coming up. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Renee Bunty, 57, Stacy Lane. So, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful had their meeting last night, and we announced that we're going to have the Beerware Program at the Columbine Elementary School over spring break. The art benches that we picked up, we're going to be having an artist touch them up, and then we'll put the epoxy on them, and then put them back out for the summer. Our community-wide, citywide community cleanup is going to be on the 21st of May, and it's going to be at the Cultural Center again, from 9 to 1. And then we're going to participate in Creek Week, which is 24 September to the 2nd of October. And something new is, we're going to do the cemetery cleanup. It's going to be a two-day event, Saturday and Sunday, June 4th and 5th. Saturday, 9 to 1, and Sunday will be 1 to 4, because we're thinking it's probably going to take two days to clean it all up. So we really appreciate getting the opportunity to go out there and clean that up, and we're working with the city to get us a dumpster and a letter to send out to people to let them know we're going to be cleaning up if they want something. It's going to be, it's going to look really nice. It's going to look really nice. So, thank you.
That's great. Thank you, ma'am. It's a great service. Thank you. Thank you, Ken. Bill?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Sawyer?
I have nothing. I had a lot, but I don't, I want to see how fast we got this time.
We set the record, I think, in 2004, it was 18 minutes or so.
I knew that. Okay, well, here's the good news for you then, no, the city attorney's not here tonight, so we have no city attorney report. Mr. Butterby?
Just an offshoot from this picture, and yes, Mr. Sawyer is indeed 87 years old. He said it was in 1907. The card says 1929. Still got great historical context. It's taken from the north side of Memorial Park. I'm sure you can see it very clearly from the back row. But what's fun is, we're going to be able to recreate this photo, and that's what we'll do. We'll, the pavilion that is in this picture is where we're building the new pavilion for the park. The church that's across the pond is the church building that's there today. So we'll do our best to recreate this picture of this exact location now, because after all, he is 87. And then we'll send another picture to him after the park is complete, so that he can see the changes. But here's the fun thing that we want to share with you this evening. You can see in this picture the tallest tree. The tallest tree was at the southwest corner of Center and Henrietta, that for the improvement of the park, we had to take it down. And recall that we mentioned to you that we were going to do something fun with that tree. And here to describe that fun is Bill.
Yeah, if you look over the shoulder of our fire chief over there, you'll see the, you have to go like this. Yeah, sure. There's a slab in wood there from that tree that sat at the corner of Henrietta and Center Street. At the corner there was a farmer's market, huddled under that tree for many years, and all of you have walked under that tree. That tree had been showing signs of real health for quite some time, and was nearing to come down. But during the design of the Memorial Park project, it was decided, well, the tree's got to come down anyways, so we designed around it, cut the tree down, and we harvested a slab of that tree. And our Parks, Buildings, and Grounds crew counted the rings over and over, and that tree is well over 200 years old.
Wow.
So when that picture was taken, that you received the night, that tree was already 117 years old. And so that tree started growing about the time of the 1812, the War of 1812.
Wow.
And I find it's kind of interesting that the War of 1812 ended on February 18th, 18... 1815. So thanks to your Parks, Buildings and Grounds crew, and your Public Works Administrative Assistant Suzanne Brown, who made the labels, we have a bit of history there on display. So, kind of cool.
Great.
That's all we got this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have more comment on written correspondence, and I guess I lost by about eight minutes this morning, it was a journey.